It's a pleasure to see everyone here tonight. If you would, please stand with me for our prayer to be followed by our pledge. Let us pray. Father, we do not take it for granted that we live in a free country and that we have opportunities to meet in the open light tonight, and we just thank you for every person here. And we thank you, Father, for the city of Natchez and all that we're able to do and your hand of favor that has been upon us. Father, let us now enjoy this meeting. Let it be a productive discussion about our budget and about our future. And Father, we ask your blessings upon each and every person here, giving you praise and honor in your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Now let us join together in our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. We'll ask the clerk to administer the roll call.
Alderman Hall?
Here.
Alderman Fraser?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
Alderman O'Leary?
Here.
Alderman Davis?
Here.
Alderman Maroni?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, I will present the question.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This evening, we only have one item on the agenda, and that would be our public hearing, and we will go into that public hearing in just a moment. And then also, the mayor and board of Alderman will have an executive session tonight to talk about employee performance and a few salary increases that had been requested but have not been granted or budgeted at the time. Well, a lot of decisions have yet to be made. Before we go into a public hearing, I do have a statement on the budget, and I'd like to read the statement, and it'll give some of you time to look over and strain your eyes. I had to find glasses. But we do have handouts. If you haven't gotten one, we have them available. But I did want to make this statement. Every year about this time, the city adopts its budget for the coming year, and every year, it is one of the most challenging things that we do. But as we have done ever since the beginning of our first administration in 2020, we are making the tough decisions that will keep our city running, providing for our public safety, and doing all that a city is expected to do. It has been said that government should operate like a business. Doing so can be tough, especially in the post-COVID world. Since 2020, most businesses in America have had to greatly increase prices and also consulting fees, and the list goes on and on, in order to offset their expenses. That is why everything has gone up, from groceries to household goods. In Natchez, however, we have worked hard to keep the same revenue millage rate, the ad valorem property tax rate we've had for years. If you look on the Mississippi Department of Revenue website, you'll see that the city's millage rate for ad valorem property taxes has remained unchanged at forty-six point seven three since 2016. Every year, as others have raised millage rates, the city has not, and we continue to post the lowage millage rates in Adams County while at the same time providing the most services. You can go on nsdor.gov, and you will find the tables, and you can check the tables, and you can go all the way back. And the last change I was able to see was a four-point change from 2015-2016 to 2016-2017, and we have held firm at that millage amount ever since, forty-six point seventy-three. This year, the Mississippi Legislature required a reassessment of property values throughout the state, and there are some that have asked the city to cut its millage rate. But just as a business has to ensure enough revenue is collected to meet expenses, the city is having to make some tough choices. In the coming year, state and federal grants, COVID relief funds, and other funding sources are being cut, and overall, the city of Natchez will likely post revenues three point four million short of what we posted last year. I know we had been throwing out a figure of four point five. We've had various versions. It gets confusing, but the number that I have most recently is three point four. That's a large difference. I wish the city could cut millage rates this year, but we can't. They will stay at the 2016-2017 levels. Since 2020, we've had our challenges. Expenses across the board have skyrocketed, and to remain competitive, we have to, we have had to raise salaries as much as three to four times for key personnel like police, fire, and public works. We have also created two new departments from scratch, Parks and Recreation and Workforce Development. We have embarked upon historic infrastructure improvements, including paving dozens of city streets, renovating every city park, and renovating key city buildings like our convention center, city auditorium, and civic center. We have renovated our North Natchez Youth Center, City Hall, our City Council Chamber Building. You should go upstairs. It's beautiful. The Historic Depot Visitor Center has been renovated. We have completed renovations at the police and fire departments. We are currently renovating the historic Angeletti House at Jack Wake Park, and we are about to celebrate the renovation of the historic Duncan Park Golf Clubhouse. We've replenished our entire fleet of city vehicles, including new police cars and even a new fire truck and a dump truck for public works. We've doubled staffing in our animal control department and provided them with new vehicles and proper equipment as well. In fact, we have more than doubled our financial commitment to animal control and local humane organizations since 2020. And because this October, Microsoft will discontinue support for Windows 10, we have been forced to replace eighty-three outdated computers throughout our city government. When I consider all of this, it amazes me how the city has been able to make so much progress without a single change in almost ten years to our millage rate. But as we have done every year, we will hold the line. There will be no millage increase this year. We will also be making needed cuts in various areas and very few raises, contrary to headlines you may have read, very few raises will be considered. We've already done our part to get our employees up to a competitive rate of pay, and we will continue to operate within our means while moving forward to continue offering essential city services and completing major projects like Morgantown Road and restoring commercial air service to the Natchez-Adams Airport. The time is now, and we will continue moving forward because Natchez deserves more. So with that said, I'll now entertain a motion to call into order our public hearing.
Send motion.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Davis. I'll have discussion. We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. We are now in a public hearing. This is an opportunity for individuals present to offer their commentary on the budget, ask questions, and be heard. And we have the podium here. Our only request is that you sign in with your name and address, and also that you limit your comments to three, four minutes so that others can have an opportunity to speak as well. And so the floor is open, and we'll just acknowledge individuals that would like to be heard. Just simply raise your hand and approach the podium.
I would think they would, I see they're looking, so I think they just need a little more time.
Not all at once.
I would think that, yeah. They're looking through.
We'll give you time if you want a little more time to look and peruse. And certainly, to ask a question, just please come to the podium, and you'll need to state your name for us and sign in, and we will need your address.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Some of you I know. Yes. Now, I'm gonna get so nervous when I get up here, I'm gonna forget my question. You're gonna be okay. Where do I live, please?
Mayor, council members. It may be true that we have had to raise incomes of our public servants and other things, and of course, we all feel the impact of higher prices. My concern, and I'm not fully aware of, you said the millage was not going up, but it has been rumored that something is going up that's going to increase our taxes.
The assessments, yes.
What would that be?
The assessments and, by the way, what is your name?
Teresa Thornton. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton, and where do you live?
I live at thirteen oh eight Westwood Road.
Okay, we just have to make it public. Ms. Thornton, yes, the state of Mississippi enacted a program this year that would require the assessment of a portion of public, of properties throughout the state, and the assessments will likely increase some property values, meaning that some property taxes may go up. And so that is going to mean that some in our city may be paying more in taxes. We've looked at it overall, I think, on average, considering the number of households we have, the number of properties we have, it could be anywhere from twelve to twenty to twenty-five dollars a month, depending on the size of the house. And so that is a correct statement.
Okay. My concern is that the income for most of the, most of your constituents have not gone up comparably to what the incomes of the public servants have, and any increase in our property taxes would be an undue burden to many people here. I know my husband and I both, we own our home, we pay our taxes, and we've noticed, you know, with the, it's hard to go to the grocery store. It's hard to see the light bill come in, and so you're asking us to give you twelve to twenty-five dollars per month more, and that could be an undue burden.
Yes.
Could be an undue burden.
Oh, I understand.
And I would like to, you know, just state that, that not everybody has that twenty-five extra dollars, especially those of us that are on limited incomes.
Ms. Thornton, I do want to say it was something done statewide. It is not something that we initiated. But looking at our budget, the city is going to be overall in a real bind ourselves. This was brought on really by 2020. We've managed to operate for six years without any increases other than some property values around Natchez have gone up because of our improved economy here. But nationally, we see it at the pump, we see it at the grocery store. We see it as a city just making payroll and paying for all the supplies. Everything's gone up on the city. And it's like running a business. You either keep the business going or you cut back on services and what you do. Well, we are cutting back on some things, but we can't cut back on police protection. We can't cut back on fire protection. That would affect your home insurance rates. We can't cut back on our public works because we all want Natchez to be a clean and safe place and beautiful place, and we've seen the struggles we've had this year.
Mayor.
It is a very tough situation, but we do hear you. We do. And, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman.
No.
And so we do.
Just on the fly.
We do understand that these are hard times for everyone. They are.
Well, I hope that as you take this budget under consideration, you will think about, you know, the lesser people in this area and the ones that it would truly impact if you were to increase by the higher amount there and not try to cut unnecessary expenditures and balance the budget.
I.
Because as any good business owner knows, you balance the budget.
You have to balance the budget. And where every business in America just about has raised prices since 2020, we have not. But I will tell you, the good news is that we have, we have a large number of our citizens, our elderly citizens, who are tax exempt, and those who are over sixty-five should not feel as much if any.
Really?
Yes, you know.
I'm over sixty-five.
But when you look at your, your tax statement, on your ad valorem taxes that you pay, a good bit of that is tax exempt based on your age. And if you don't feel like you're getting the proper tax exemption as a person over sixty-five, you can go to the county courthouse just next door to City Hall and go to the tax assessor's office and ask them if they have your exemption correct on your taxes.
Okay. I do remember we filed Homestead exemption, and there was some reduction in the taxes, but with this, I came back to Natchez twenty years ago from North Carolina, and I left there at four percent taxes and came here to seven percent taxes. But since I've been here, it's been, I believe, the food tax and the hotel tax was ten percent?
That's correct.
Okay. Has that?
Tourism taxes.
Has, have the tourism taxes impacted any of these cuts that you're talking about? I mean, have they made up for any of those cuts?
They actually help us to keep a lower burden on our, as I said in my statement, the city actually collects the smallest portion of ad valorem taxes when you compare the county and the school board, and that's because tourism funds, it actually pushes sales tax collection and sales tax generation, and that sales tax helps offset our need for property taxes. And if it weren't for tourism, I don't know what we'd do. It is our number-one industry combined, and we really make or break it by our sales tax collections in the spring and in the fall during those busy tourism seasons.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Thornton, you've been very kind, and I would love to know what the property taxes are in North Carolina. I will tell you, my wife moved here from Texas, and she just considered herself to have a tax holiday when she moved here.
Really?
Compared to what the property taxes were in Texas. But also, it is sometimes nice to have a birthday, and I'll tell anyone, once you hit the age of sixty-five, make sure you check on your exemption status at the tax assessor's office.
Okay. I'll certainly have to look.
Yes. Alderman Maroni?
Talking about the reassessment, when was the last time a reassessment was done before this one?
I can't.
Pardon?
I can't remember. Twenty twenty?
A quarter of the county is reassessed every year in terms of just regular reassessments.
I need to be able to get that on the mic. I'll repeat that. So Jan Griffey is saying with a Natchez Democrat that one quarter of the county is reassessed every year.
Every four years.
And.
We had a twenty-five percent increase mandated by the Department of Revenue as an inflationary.
And thank you for clarifying that, Ms. Griffey. And so this year, the state enacted a twenty-five percent across-the-board increase as an inflationary measure.
I guess that answers my question. My question was gonna be, is it not possible that in a reassessment, some property values, depending upon where they are, some property values might go down due to, due to various circumstances?
I don't know.
I just wondered if that might be.
I pray mine is one of those.
Well, just thinking about Westwood, and that's in my ward, you know, that's a fairly old neighborhood, and just thinking that it might be possible that some of those property values actually go down, or they might not have gone up. That's, that's completely possible, I would think. I don't know whether we've seen any of the actual reassessments on anything.
I think it's kind of a mixed bag. It's kind of a mixed bag over there, depending on, some people have gone in and done renovations and up the property values, and some people have not done those renovations and the property values.
I've been over there a lot lately. That's in my ward, and I've been over there a lot.
Well, if you've been over there, what are they gonna do about that tree that fell in between those houses over there?
Let's talk about that.
We have to stay on topic of our public hearing tonight. Ms. Thornton, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
I will say, though, to be perfectly transparent, we do understand, though, that it isn't across-the-board statewide reassessment that is going to result in an increase in property values. So there is no mistaking that. Alderman Fraser?
If I'm not, excuse me, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Mayor, I think that if you do your assessment, if you feel that your assessment is not fair, I think you can go back to the tax assessor office and request a reassessment.
I believe that's correct.
Yep. I've actually done that.
He's over for this.
So.
It's already timed up.
Um, but. Yes, it would be too late.
Yeah, 'cause a lot of people don't know.
But next year, I actually once had to take an appraisal to the county assessor's office to prove that the house was not worth what they were saying it was worth, and it took some doing, but they, and it cost some money, but the appraisal won out. So I will throw that out and agree with you, Alderman Fraser. Do we have any other comments, others that would like to speak?
Don't be shy. We don't bite. And, Mr. Mayor, may I ask everyone back here who's speaking, because you're getting feedback that you can't hear you, it sounds like a mumbly sound when people are listening online, they can't hear, so that's my reason for asking.
All right.
Will everybody, will you pull your mic?
We sure will.
When you give us your comments. Thank you.
We will. Thank you. All right, do we have any others? Any other comments? I will say, just for the benefit of everyone here, thank you for indulging me in the statement. I'll be sharing more of that very likely in my weekly column in the next issue of the local Natchez Democrat. We appreciate that opportunity. I just want to give a word of thanks to our city clerk and her department. It's been a very difficult task, it always is, to take all of the requests and narrow it down to a budget, and I believe the city clerk just last week shared with us that we actually had one point eight million in requests from our department directors that were not granted, that were not granted. So I say that just to say we are tightening the belt here. And that's so far. We have more decisions to make. Also, we have had twelve employees make salary increase requests, and we will be discussing those in our executive session shortly. Out of all the employees, only twelve, and I would say the majority of those claiming that they possibly were overlooked when some others got raises. We have given raises every year since 2020. We've had to do our best to, believe it or not, compete with Wendy's to keep police officers, and the list goes on. And we've done that without increasing millage rates and without increasing your taxes, but it's a tough job. The budget, though, I am grateful to say, continues providing all the services, and it also has quite a number of projects and continued infrastructure improvement, including eight hundred thousand of infrastructure improvement to our streets on top of the millions of dollars we've already spent over the last several years. It also includes some very important issues such as finishing Morgantown Road, but also some drainage issues. You may remember that we shortly, time ago, announced we would be getting funds to repair a real problem at State Street and Fine Avenue. There is a culvert there that is very old, and when and if it ever collapsed, it would totally disable State Street, crippling traffic flow. And we were grateful to get a federal earmark for that, and we'll be working on that. We also were able to get a federal earmark for drainage improvements on Briarwood, also an area of Rollingwood. And if you'll recall, over the last several years, we've completed drainage improvement projects in the Westiers Lane area, also Concord. We have a number of others on our map to be addressed either this year or in the coming year. So we're not going to stop doing good things, and it should be a very good year. We will stay within the budget because, as Ms. Thornton just pointed out, like a business, we've got to balance the books like a family. And I also want to tell you, it is illegal for a municipal government in the state of Mississippi to operate in a deficit. And if you've been told that we have been spending in the deficit, if that is true, I should not be here. I should be somewhere sporting an orange jumpsuit, and I don't like orange. I want to just tell you, from year to year, when we have major projects, we do have to carry funds sometimes forward from year to year, and it will look like we're spending more than we actually took in, but it's because, like our Morgantown Road project, these are funds that we've actually banked now for several years when we first started getting the funds together for that project. And so don't let any, anyone tell you that we're in, in the deficit and doing deficit spending. We are not. Also, I do want to correct this rumor, 'cause you've all heard it, and I've read it, and we talked about it in the paper recently, the city has not paid three hundred and fifty-six thousand in NSF fees. I think I would just have to totally quit because of malfeasance if that ever happened. And that has been spread, I know it's hard to believe that things get spread on social media that are not true, but that is one example. The city does move a lot of money around, and we were moving a lot of money around from investment accounts where it's earning interest to the actual account where it's paying the project, and that was the case with a six million dollar street improvement project last year. And during that time, sometimes the money doesn't quite, and it'll be a huge chunk, you know? A hundred thousand bucks hit, and no, we're not paying a hundred thousand in NSF fees. We're just simply making sure, the bank is making sure that we cover that account. Sometimes the transfer arrives at the very time that the wire is being made. It gets complicated, but it's always good to explain those things so that people can understand. Before, yes, Alderman, Alderman Maroni?
I just wanted to say, I want to make sure that people don't confuse deficit spending with debt. I mean, just like if you, you know, go out and buy a house, you incur debt. You sign a loan, you borrow the money, you get a, you know, two hundred thousand dollar house now for promised payments in the future. There've been lots of city projects over generations that have been done that way. I mean, you know, so we have projects where we may, we incur debt. We take out a loan, basically, and we have to pay that back over time. We've got lots of that sort of stuff. You know, not, not many people can go out and buy a new car and just write a check for it. They set something up with a finance company, they buy that car that they don't have the money for on that day, but they know that they've got money coming in, and they pay a reasonable amount month to month for forty-eight months, sixty months, however long it takes. them. Obviously, real estate is done over much longer terms, very often thirty years on thirty-year mortgages, but it's the same basic concept. So it's not that the city doesn't have debt. Sure, we have some debt, we've got things that we pay on, just like everybody else in every other city in this country. So don't get those two confused.
And Alderman Maroney, I'm glad you brought that up. We actually, in this budget, are using some of our revenue to pay down extra on debt. And when you look at the total burden, you'll find that it's a very low, we have, for a city our size, and for all that we've done, the debt is very low. Our vehicles have been purchased, we were the first city in the state, and now every city's doing it. We replace our fleet using leases. And the leases cut down on maintenance and also ensure that we are constantly rotating our fleet rather than seeing police cars that look like they're held together with duct tape. We also, if you'll recall, we were able to refinance the bond for the convention center just, just before two or three years, maybe three, of balloon payments were about to absolutely bust the budget. And for less money, we were able to renovate the convention center and the auditorium and the civic center. We also were able to use a, a portion, less than fifty percent, of the use fees that we get sales taxes on internet sales, and that's how we were able to finance a six million dollar bond for our street repavement project. And then we also were able to take on a two million dollar bond. It is being paid by proceeds coming to the city each year into our community development fund, and that comes from Magnolia Bluffs Casino. And that is how we were able to, for two million dollars, renovate all of our parks, our youth center, and about to finish our golf clubhouse. So I believe we've been good stewards. I think it's good to take the opportunity while we have people who went to the time to come here tonight. Do we have any questions before we end the, the public hearing?
I don't have any questions, but I'll be there.
Okay, we, we can have some discussion with the Alderman if you'd like to have any discussion. I'll entertain any discussion that some of you may have before we end the public hearing.
Well, it's not pertaining particularly to this public hearing, but I did want to say about the internet sales tax, I think I said in the other meeting.
Oh, sure.
I hear you stress that again, the six million dollars we did with the street.
Right.
And we said about eight hundred thousand go to public work so that they could do what?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, okay. But again, I would like to see some of that money go to my ward, you know, we have projects in our ward to get done, that it's maybe five hundred thousand, you know, to go in your ward, not just allocate the funding, so that way we can get things done in our wards as well.
Well, that's exactly how we did the six million dollar street improvement.
Well, we did the streets that way, Mr. Mayor.
We divided up by ward, and then it'll just be, you know, we, we don't have six million this year.
No.
But we will have, because we don't want to take out any more debt, so we're going to use what's above the debt payment on bonds to make some needed infrastructure improvements in the city we are. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Frazier?
I'm looking at this budget, and some of the things in here that I don't like is something I do, but it's simply saying, this is what we have to do in order to keep the city sound. Like some projects, like we've got a lot of things going on, and this year, we're not going to be able to do everything that we can do because, as I explained to the mayor and the rest of the board once before, we don't know which way we're going to go because this administration, we have a new administration in Washington DC. We depend on a lot of grants and stuff, but.
But grants you don't pay back.
But, but grants and loans, we depend on a lot of stuff like that, but as I said, this is going to be a lean year until we can see which way we can go. Then we can, we can, we can in the future regret, address some of these requests from people's action, but as it stands now, this board is doing the best they can with what we got. And like I say, some things that I, I don't like, there's some things I do, but as, as a, as an Alderman in Ward Two, it's my duty to, and not just Ward Two, to the citizens that we, as the mayor stated earlier, that we be a good steward with the city money. This is not my money, this is y'all money, the city, people, citizens of Natchez. And as the mayor stated earlier, I don't look good in an orange suit. So.
Alderman Smith and then Alderman Hall.
I'm going to stand by the statement I made that was in the paper.
Yeah.
I did state that there had been some astronomical requests made for raises, so I do stand by this statement, and it was reported correctly.
And we will be, but I do want to say again, we've only had twelve employees make a request, and we have not approved any of those. It will be our first time to discuss those raises and performance in just a few minutes. Yes, Alderman Smith.
That was such a broad statement, I had so many come up and start saying, the article in the paper said y'all were just making raises everywhere, I was like, wait, what? We only got a few that we're talking about. But I do want to go back to the debt service. You know, another reason, I mean, we've got, like you were saying, I mean, it demonstrates you've got good credit, you've got to have some debt service, and you've got to be seen as paying it responsibly so that future bonds or any kind of loans will get lower interest rates. And we've gotten lower, low interest rates with our bonds because we have been responsible with our repayment of bonds and loans. So that's really important.
Oh, and another, it very good, talking about bonds, it's so important to keep a good bond rating because if you don't have a good bond rating, it's like having a bad credit score. And we are about to embark upon three very significant economic development projects, and these require some bonds. And it has been, again, I'm sorry to bust your bubble, but there are some things on Facebook you can't believe, and one of them is that we are using taxpayer funds to finance projects for millionaire developers. Now, well, you know, there's a way of twisting every truth, but Greg Isles was famously quoted just a couple of weeks ago at his funeral, a half-truth equals a whole lie. So I want to give you the whole truth, and that is, there is an economic development strategy employed all across this country, and it's been employed for years, which allows you to take a vacant property, it can be a, an old hotel like Viola, or it can be a, a blank piece of ground like that property just north of Walmart, is sitting there producing very little in property taxes and zero in sales tax. And so what it does is it allows a developer to enter an agreement with the city, where the developer takes the risk to get financing to build a project. The city issues the bonds, but the bonds are guaranteed not by the city but by the developer. And so as a result, we had a meeting just today with some attorneys to discuss an issue that will come before the board tomorrow with regard to Trace Town. Trace Town, a new Hobby Lobby and so many other stores coming, would not be happening if it weren't for our ability to work with the developers in order to put tax increment financing in place, TIF bonds. And we are doing this very conservatively, and the ultimate risk is not borne by the city, it's borne by the developer. But the end result will be, yes, the city may defer collecting sales taxes for a few years, but we will have all these new retail stores, and we'll also have all these new jobs, and that money multiplies in our community, some have said as much as ten times, and that generates more revenue for Natchez as a whole. It also will increase the avalorum tax because Trace Town's going to be worth a lot more with a brand-new Hobby Lobby sitting on it. But the other great thing about this is when the bond is paid back, from that day forward, the city then begins to collect one hundred percent of a sales tax that did not exist when it was a vacant property. We will be doing this at Trace Town. Actually, we're doing a very creative thing with DEQ and a Brownfield program that's too complicated to explain, but these are brilliant strategies. The development at Walmart will be tax increment financing. And Viola will include some tax rebate financing that is a different vehicle provided through the Mississippi Development Authority. Again, at no risk to the city, the risk is borne by the developer. And so that's the whole truth instead of a half-truth. And if anyone ever has any questions about anything they read or hear, just call me, and I'll be happy to visit with you. And then if we need to bring in some of our folks who give us the expert advice, we'll be happy to, because we don't want anyone to think that we're doing anything reckless with taxpayer funds, far from it. All right, I think we're ready. I want to thank all of you again for coming and for being here, and those online, thank you for listening, and we also thank the local media for always being here and, and, and reporting so well on what we do. I will now call for the motion to adjourn the public hearing and return to our regular meeting.
Sir?
Motion made by Alderman Smith and seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion? We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you again. At this time, we are going to follow the procedures to have an executive session, and we are in our regular meeting now. And so the state of Mississippi allows executive sessions for various discussions. Tonight, we need to have one of those discussions, and it is to confidentially discuss job performance and salary requests made by twelve different city employees. We will be having that executive session shortly. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to go into a closed determination that we will actually have in the open for the purposes of considering whether or not to go into executive session. And so that motion by Alderman Maroney, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion? We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. We are now in a closed determination, but we're having it out in the open. We have said that we want to meet to discuss job performance as it relates to salary increases requested by certain employees. Mr. Attorney, does that meet the definition of state law requirements to go into an executive session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, in my opinion, the discussion of job performance and raises for employees other than the mayor and the board of Alderman does comply with the exception to the open meeting.
All right, thank you so much. We will now call for a, a motion to adjourn the closed determination.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Davis, seconded by Alderman Hall. Discussion? We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. At this time, excuse me, we will now ask for a motion to go into executive session for the purposes that have just been described. Motion made by Alderman Smith and seconded by Alderman Hall. Discussion? We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. At this time, we will end the live feed, we will go into our executive session, we will have a report when we.